Speed reading?
Yes.
No, I've got a third of it in my brain. Oh, Lena, you dropped something over there.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
Like checks. Good. Picking up.
Well. Well.
All right. How close already are we? The royal way.
I'm on your window and be ready anyways.
Should we go?
Recording.
Just logging in. All right, we can do it. Good afternoon, San Miguel County. Today is Wednesday, July 9th, 2025. This is a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. It is about 2:10 p.m. We are located on Wright's Mesa today in the Sheriff's Office Annex. If anyone is listening online and curious about how the day will go, we are going to start with just a little bit of, what do you call it? What's it called? Record, not record keeping. This.
House.
Housekeeping. Housekeeping. And then we are going to go into an executive session with our attorneys. We should be out of that hopefully around 3 o'clock and then we'll resume kind of our normal meeting flow. We will take as long as we need to get through that. If there is time, we will adjourn and then we will agree, we'll come back in for a listening session with whoever may be online or in the room. And that will be from 5 o'clock till 7 or maybe less time if we don't need all of that. But that's how the day is going today. Present in the room are all three commissioners and staff. I would like to welcome Megan Knowles, who is our new communications coordinator. This is her first B O C C meeting, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. And we are really happy to have you here for all sorts of reasons.
To be here.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to move into our moment of silence for grounding and gratitude. Thank you. Review of the agenda is our next item. I will note that item 8A has been continued. That was a special events permit for the Rotary Foundation. Any other adjustments, comments, questions, or are we otherwise ready to go? Okay, terrific. Moving now to item five, public comment for items not on the agenda. A reminder to members of the public to please limit your comments to three minutes. If comments are not related to an item on the agenda, there will be no board response or action taken since the topic was not posted with proper notice and any comment could potentially violate the Colorado Open Meetings law. We have no members of the public in the room with us and I'm not seeing any hands online. So we will carry on to our consent agenda, which has three items on. and I'm not seeing any hands online. So we will carry on to our consent agenda, which has three items on it. Any comments on that from my fellow commissioners?
No comment, but I'd like to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. The consent agenda passes unanimously. We are off to a good start. Moving on now to item seven, attorney matters, and this is where we will shift into executive session. But hi, Maura.
Hi.
I'm curious to know, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you great. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect. Lane, you wanted to, well, you'll come on when you come on. Lane?
Yes, I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, terrific. So Maura, do we have anything to cover before we move into executive session?
I don't have anything separate topics, but before we move in, if you, Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Waring could just repeat for the record your standard statement on the conflict of interest issue.
Thank you. I have that right here. So the following agenda item will involve discussion of deed restricted properties within San Miguel County and the operation of certain covenants and restrictions. In the interest of transparency and to address any perceived conflict of interest, I'd like to disclose on the record that I am an owner of deed restricted property within San Miguel County and have entered into a covenant with the county for that property. I do not believe this will impact my ability to remain fair and impartial for purposes of today's discussion.
Everything that you said holds true for me as well, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you for that reminder, Maura. I believe now I am ready for a motion to go into executive session, and let me just read the agenda item. Sorry, continue discussion on the San Miguel County Housing Authority legal review and interpretation citing 4B advisement from an attorney or two.
We need to go into executive session for that purpose.
Aye, second that.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Let's do that. We'll move into executive session, which requires some technological trickery. We will do whatever you recommend from the helm.
Do I need to make a break? Okay, great.
So we're all moving into a breakout room? Thanks, Jared. I did notice, I think that in the main room, it still said starting at 2:10.
Oh, sorry, I'll change that.
So you need that to
Yes.
Go to the session, yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Is everyone driving the bus? Thank you for letting me be on the video.
Okay.
Can we take a two-minute bio break for some folks?
Sure. Should we just say that we're back? Hello, San Miguel County. The time is 3:45 PM. We are out of executive session. During executive session, we discussed only the matter that was agendized. We are going to take a two-minute bio break, and when we come back, we will be addressing item 8B. See you in a few minutes. Just one second. Are we recording?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Can we just pause a sec till we have our group back? Thanks. Hello, San Miguel County. We are back after our brief break. It is 3:53 PM. We are on item 8B of our agenda, consideration of approving resolution 2025-21 regarding adoption of the National Incident Management System, otherwise known as NIMS, concept of emergency management planning and unified command as its system of preparing for and responding to disaster incidents. Maura Fahy, you're back.
I'm back. So this is really just an update to a prior resolution that was adopted in 2006. And the key changes between the prior resolution and this one is to designate a specific point of contact as part of our NIMS protocol, and that's the County Office of Emergency Management and the Human Resources Director. And then this updated resolution also adds a little bit more context for why we're adopting this as our system by citing some of the specific federal policies and laws that implement this program.
I had a couple of questions. Anybody else? How did this come up, Maura? It makes perfect sense what you're doing, but I'm just curious, was there a change in statute or were you just reading all of the resolutions that we passed since the beginning of time and found this needing help?
No, this was brought to me by Jennifer and Shannon in the Sheriff's Office in the Emergency Management. And I think it's probably primarily the designated point of contact that they thought it would be good that we had that. good that we had that actually written somewhere.
Definitely. And I think it makes perfect sense that it would be the Office of Emergency Management staff. I was curious why we chose the Human Resources Director as the second point of contact as opposed to maybe the county manager? Who is the kind of, I feel like that person is, yeah, just how did we make that choice?
I'm not exactly sure. That's what Jennifer had communicated to me as the changes they wanted. If I had to guess, it could be one or both that the Human Resources Director is now our designated risk manager?
No.
No.
No, she is not.
Who's the risk manager?
I am. That was change. That was the case when Crystal Howard was our HR Director. We changed that when I started. I'm the designated risk manager. I'm also the liaison officer in the unified command structure. I'm also the only person besides the sheriff who has authority to declare the disaster besides the commissioners. So I do think it should probably have me and not HR.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe what I can say is Jennifer's been out on vacation. And maybe we can continue this until July 30th if we get confirmation.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. Let's do that. And then. Okay, I have one other question, though. When I read through this, NIMS was set up as the basis, it says, for all incident management in the state of Colorado. And ours is limited, I think, by saying we'll use this system for disaster incidents. And it feels a little more specific. Do we want to make it broader and also say that ours is for all incident management? I guess that would be our second question. Does that make sense? Okay. Continue to, what was the date, please?
July 30.
Okay. And you're in a motion? Do we need to vote on that?
I'm going to consider, I'm going to extend consideration of automatic and total access.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye as well. The motion carries whether we need to do it or not. Okay, moving on now to 8C. Approval of the Chair's Signature on a Grant to the Tarrade Airport Authority from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program, Project Number 3-08-0088-041-2025, in the amount of $3,461,703. I read that wrong. I'm sorry. I got to go back to fourth grade. And this is, I think, also Maura.
Me again. So I'll preface this discussion by saying that we previously approved a very similar grant agreement for the airport in May, I believe it was. And I apologize for not bringing these issues to the meeting at that time. It was on the consent agenda. I think I had some internal discussion about these issues, but it didn't actually get brought to the meeting. But I wanted, I had flagged this for Commissioner Brown, and she thought it would be a good idea to have the discussion here in the meeting. That this, this grant agreement and the prior one contain several provisions that purport to require the county as a sponsor to comply with certain federal laws and executive orders. Most of those are not of concern. I would read that. So I can point out Section 31 of the agreement, which is on page 12, has reference to an executive order ending illegal discrimination and restoring merit-based opportunity. I don't think that's something we have concern with, not complying with. Section 32 is the one that I specifically had discussed with Commissioner Brown recently, which is titled "Federal Law and Public Policy Requirements." But if you read far enough in it, it says, "The sponsor will cooperate with federal officials in the enforcement of federal law, including cooperating with and not impeding U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement and other federal offices and components of the Department of Homeland Security in the enforcement of federal immigration law." So, because this has been a topic that we've discussed somewhat regularly recently, I wanted to just bring it up. I don't read this provision as requiring anything more than what the county has stated its position already is, which is to cooperate with federal immigration officials to the extent it is allowed by state law. And I don't read this provision as overriding state law or requiring the county to act in a way that would be inconsistent with state law. But I did want to just flag it for you all so you know that this language is showing up in these agreements. Something that we're signing on to. And then there is also a section at the end, an attachment of assurances. And that also includes several of the current administration executive order, orders saying, you know, we're making an assurance that we will follow these laws. But with respect to this particular agreement and the project that's being undertaken, I don't see how most or all of them are relevant. But this Section 32 is certainly written a bit more broadly than being just as applied to this agreement or project.
Let's address Point 32 first, if that's okay, Maura, and then I'd love to look at the thing in the appendix because I haven't looked at that yet. I just, Maura brought it to my attention, and I just felt that it was important that both of you understood that this is the kind of thing that's happening, that the Trump administration is adjusting these grant agreements to kind of work in their, their policy provisions. Maura reassured me that even though this policy, you know, and the sort of position of the administration is is made clear here in 32, it doesn't, Point 32 on page 12, it doesn't require us to break state law, right? So we have always and will continue to cooperate with ICE investigations and certainly not impede them to the extent that it doesn't break state law. And of course, we will help with them enforcing federal laws as well. But this is, this is something that's kind of, I just wanted you all to know about. Does that make sense? Do you have any thoughts or comments or just thanks for the heads up?
No, thanks for the heads up.
Or you don't need to say thanks.
No, I feel that way. And, yeah. I appreciate your interpretation, Maura, because, you know, just reading it in plain language, I wouldn't have necessarily interpreted it that way, so.
It's reassuring.
Yeah, it is.
And Lance, did you want to make a comment about that or should we move to the appendix?
Let's go to the assurances.
Okay. And what page is that, Maura, in this document?
They start on page 22.
Okay.
And it's really page 24 is where there's the list of executive orders.
And what are we being, it says, what about these executive orders? This is on page?
So the assurance is at the top, says, "These assurances shall be complied with in the performance of grant agreements for airport development, airport planning, and noise compatibility program grants." So I read the assurances as being more specific to the grant and the project. So I, I'm not too concerned about the reference to these executive orders because I, I just don't see how they really apply to the county's role as a sponsor of the airport in this grant. But there, so it starts with the restoring freedom of speech and ending federal censorship.
Where are you now, please?
On page 24.
Okay.
The list of executive orders, starting with F. Ending radical and wasteful government DEI programs and preferencing unleashing American energy, defending women from gender ideology extremism, and restoring biological truth to the federal government, and ending illegal discrimination and restoring merit-based opportunity.
So again, this is not saying that the county overall will be taking a position on these executive orders, but that in the execution of the work that this grant is providing funding for, these executive orders will be abided by. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't feel are actually even relevant to the work that will be done.
Correct.
I will note that I think on the very first page of this agreement that we are being asked to sign on behalf of the airport receiving $3.7 million, $3.5 million is that we are not allowed to amend this agreement. So I don't know that we, I guess we do have a choice, but as you say, Maura, it doesn't have any practical implications.
I think based on Maura's counsel, I can comfortably move to approve the Chair's Signature on a Grant to the Tarrade Airport Authority from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program, Project Number 3-08-0088-041-2025, in the amount of $3,461,703.
I'll second that.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. The motion passes. Thank you, Maura, for bringing this to our attention, and I really appreciate it and would ask that you continue to do so just so we really have a clear understanding of what we're signing and how it might be different from something we would expect. So thank you so much. Moving on to 8D, Presentation of the County Board of Equalization Value Report by Sarah Enders. There you are. Sorry, we're late, Sarah.
All good. I'm here. And this is a presentation to the County Board of Equalization, so sorry for that typo. But according to statute, the assessor shall report the valuation for assessment of all taxable property in the county to the County Board of Equalization, or as known as the Board of County Commissioners, not later than July 15th. A list shall be submitted of all real and personal property protests, the status slash outcome of each protest protest, and a list of owners who failed to return a personal property declaration schedule. I do have a note on here that this report does not include state assessed values. In 2024, our state assessed values totaled $4,546,663 in assessed real property value and $19,376,137 in personal property assessed values, and 2025 will probably be pretty similar. So for real property as of July 1st, 2025, our vacant, so I'm just going to kind of go through and give you guys the percent change, basically. And once I'm through, if you have any questions about things that stand up, please feel free. So vacant property, we're up about 25 and a half percent from 2024. Residential real property, we're up 21.7%. Commercial property up 32%. Industrial real property up 71%. Agricultural real property is down about four and a half percent. Natural resources is down about 1%. Producing mines, so NA because in 2024, we didn't have anything on the books in the category of producing mines for real property. Oil and gas, we are up about 90% for real property. And so real property for oil and gas is production. I believe that the reason that number is up so much is because for oil and gas, we're looking for the prior year's production. And so in 2023, our only producer was going through bankruptcy. And so that's my assumption is why they were down so much in 2023. And under a new operator in 2024, they were back up to normal levels of production. The other note I have on that is industrial property, that percentage increase looks big, but we only have about 12 accounts in that category. So, you know, any, any changes in value that are significant are going to cause a big jump for that. For real property protests, we had a total of 668 appeals. We adjusted 303 of those, denied 364, and had one withdrawn. Any questions on the real property value changes?
Can you remind me, please, in the second paragraph, what state assessed values are that are not included in this?
So those are mostly like utility categories, like electric transmission lines, railroads is a big one that we don't deal with here. I'm trying to think what else. Phone lines, things like that, that, you know, by definition tend to cross county lines. And so the state, the Division of Property Taxation, actually values those companies and then allocates value to the different counties. And then we get, so we get an initial notice of valuation in July for those companies. And then counties and the companies are allowed to appeal those values. And then we get a final notice of valuation in August. So we won't have a solid idea of those values until, into August.
Thank you. And then my other question is, the protests that were adjusted versus denied, is that kind of a typical ratio? Or was there anything different about this year versus previous assessment years?
It can vary pretty significantly from year to year. Like I have looked over previous years and, you know, that percentage that is adjusted versus denied can vary pretty significantly. I've seen some years where it's, you know, 20% adjusted. Seen some years where it's 60, 70% adjusted. It just depends. And, and that, those adjustments are, you know, the number of protests that are adjusted doesn't necessarily speak to how much those adjustments were. You know, sometimes those can just be a change in classification or a change in, you know, property descriptions, things like that. It doesn't necessarily indicate a change in value or necessarily indicate a big change in value. But it can. So it just depends. It's not necessarily consistent from year to year.
Thanks. Anybody else? I think we're good to go on?
Okay. So for personal property values, residential personal property was down about almost 7%. Commercial personal property was down about 1.4%. Industrial down about 33 and a half percent. Natural resources personal property was up about 24%. Producing mines was down about 10% and oil and gas was down about one and a half percent. My note on industrial as well as natural resources is that in each of those categories, we only have two accounts. In industrial, we had, in 2024, we had three accounts and down to two accounts in 2025. So that's why that was a significant drop percentage-wise. And then natural resources, again, we only have two accounts. So personal property is typically equipment. So if one of those companies, you know, makes some capital investments and buys new equipment, that number's going to make a big jump. Oil and gas, we have not gotten any information from our producer for the last two years. So the production value on the previous page, that mostly comes from the state, state's reporting, the information that is publicly available for production numbers. But as far as equipment goes, we've had to just go off of what's called best information available. And so that change is mostly just assuming that they haven't put in any new equipment and we're just seeing the depreciation change on that equipment. And kind of across the board on personal property, it's typical to see losses in value unless property owners are buying new equipment because we're accounting for depreciation on those work instead of market value. We had one protest in personal property. So depending on when you're, when you looked at my report, I updated that yesterday. We had one protest that was received after July 1st because there is a June 30. We had one protest that was received after July first because there is a June thirtieth postmark deadline. Um, that was not adjusted, it was denied. We had one hundred eighty four personal property accounts where taxpayers failed to file a declaration schedule. Um, and there's a list attached with those. One hundred twenty three of those accounts were um, those oil and gas accounts, which again is primarily one operator.
And if they don't file the schedule, I've noticed in the detail that you find them, is that right?
We do, yeah. Um, for most personal property, it's a maximum fifty dollar fine per schedule. Um, for oil and gas, it's, I can't remember what the amount is per day that we can find them, but it's a maximum three thousand dollars per operator. Uh, so at this point, we've done the full three thousand on that one operator.
Any other questions from the? Do we need to accept this, Sarah, or do we just say thank you?
You can just say thank you.
We know there's a lot more than a page and a half of work that went into this, so.
Super easy, no problem. All right, thank you, guys.
I'm glad you're out of the protest period or for now.
Oh, that was one thing I was gonna mention, and so actually now we're going into second level appeals, so going into our C D O E appeals. Um, Anne and Lance, I know we didn't have a hearing officer last year, so you two, I think, sat in on or sat as the C D O E and listened to those appeals last year. Um, Galena, I was gonna say it would be an interesting educational bit if you wanted to kind of listen in on some of those hearings this year. Uh, we do have a hearing officer who will be giving, um, listening to those hearings and then giving a recommendation to C D O E, so um, the commissioners don't have to listen to those hearings, but it is kind of just interesting to see the process.
Sounds riveting. When, uh, when is that happening?
Um, I will defer to Nancy for the exact dates. I know um, we're starting those hearings later this month. Um, I thought she told me the other day that um, our first hearings were maybe eighteen, eight, thirteen?
Well, eighteen and the twenty?
Twenty, the, the Thursday, Friday, and the twenty fourth and and then Monday, oh, sorry. Yeah, twenty four, eighteenth, twenty fourth, twenty fifth, and twenty eighth.
And the reason that we have a hearing officer this year and not last year, tell me if I'm correct, Sarah, is because this was a reassessment year, so we have many more appeals than we would have last year when there was we did not reassess properties.
That's right. Yeah, last year we had a handful that went to the second level of appeals this year and expecting that there will probably be at least a few dozen.
Okay, and I should follow up with Nancy on further information on, okay. Great, I'll do that.
And again, not required to sit in on those, but it is just kind of interesting to see.
I don't think you need to catch every minute and everyone.
Sure, but I'd like to get a feel.
All right, great.
Ready for next year, we'll do it. Thank you so much, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
Alrighty, moving on now to eight E, review of the mid-year financials with the Finance Department, Ramona Rama, who is our director and whoops, Paige, who's our deputy director, but it says Jared Biggs Deputy County Director, so the, probably the three of you are all gonna have something to say. Right? Nope, not Jared, just Paige and Ramona. Let me just say how nice it is to see you all in person. It's always nice to see you on Zoom, but it's even nicer to see you in person. And I'm sorry we didn't get over there to say hello yet, but you came over here, thank you.
Oh, thank you. So this is our mid-year update for you. Um, Mike and I have been talking about this for, you know, a couple of years trying to get this. So you're updated before we just flashed you with the budget, right? We wanted to give you kind of an interim update of where things were going. The problem is a lot of our processes are, there's lag time, right? And so we just kind of picked April thirtieth as our one third of the year marker to try to evaluate this, so we could come to you before we started the budget process. If we waited until we got six years, or sorry, six months of financials completed, you wouldn't see us until September, October, we're in the throes of the budget, and then it's kind of, you know, a little late in the fiscal year. So we kind of just had to make this, um, we're gonna show this as, even though it's, we call it a mid-year update for you, it's really just looking at where we were at the end of four, um, accounting periods or four months into our fiscal year. And also evaluating at that point in time if there was gonna be a need for a mid-year um, budget, a supplemental budget appropriation process, or if we were going well and would need to bring that up until the end of the fiscal year, as we have historically done. So this was just a snapshot in time, literally, um, as of April thirtieth, when we closed our four months of financial transactions of where we were standing, sitting with all of our operating funds. The exception to that is the Health and Human Services Fund, and Linnea will be presenting that in an upcoming meeting. Um, she was working on her information through April. So this is just, um, an overview for you to show, um, we, in the second paragraph under expenditures, it does explain a little bit is, you know, some of our expenditures are on a linear basis and thirty three percent is about a linear gauge for four months into the fiscal year. But the first part of the year, we do see some that's weighted a little bit by one-time capital purchases or subscription renewals or things like that, so if you look at a percentage, we're at thirty one percent linear, linearly, then linearly, sorry, uh, we are under our thirty three percent. But there are some, you know, exceptions to that with one-time capital purchases and things of that nature. So that is the kind of the revenue or the expenditure side, we'll jump back up to the revenue, our revenues are on track. Um, when we look at it, the treasurer did indicate through June fifteenth as the last or the second payment of property taxes, we were about ninety point four seven percent come, um, collected on our property tax through June fifteenth. Um, historically, we see about a ninety eight to ninety nine percent collection, um, by the end of the fiscal year, so we've, we've collected the lion's share of the property taxes of June fifteenth. We did receive a pill payment, that is one of our big revenue sources in our general fund and was up seventy thousand from um, twenty twenty fours payment. Any questions on revenues or expenditures? No questions, but this is really helpful to just get eyes on this at this point, leading into the the budget setting season. So, thanks first. And then the other quick thing that I wanted to just update is the personnel, um, you know, as, and then we used a June thirtieth because that was our most recent, you know, we had over eighteen vacant positions um, currently being recruited for at that point in time. Um, we have since in the last week or so filled a couple of those, but we also are also processing terminations too, so that's just an ever-changing number, but um, as of June thirtieth, there were eighteen vacant positions. When you look at the salary or vacancy savings associated with those positions, as of April thirtieth, we were about two hundred and one thousand dollars, um, savings on positions that were vacant as of April thirtieth. So that number, you know, depending on what happens, will continue to increase, will have large savings, hopefully it goes down when we fill these positions. But that, when we, that number has arrived at what is appropriated through the annual budget and what we had spent through the months. So that's just kind of a gauge for us, you know, is it's a good tracker, so then if there are additional requests that come up or things change significantly with personnel, we kind of have a number to work with about fiscal, um, fiscal numbers as far as do we have money that we can certain requests and things like that, this is kind of a gauge. Um, one of the factors is, you know, that we factor into when we make those recommendations. So that was personnel, um, and then the last one is, you know, where.
Oh, and before we move on from personnel, this might be a Mike question or maybe a you question, is eighteen kind of our you know, kind of a typical vacancies for us? Or a little high, a little low? I mean, I know it's a part of a natural, you know, organism of a, of a enterprise that you're gonna have turnover. Does, does anybody have a sense of that?
Just doing a little division.
It's, I would say it's a little bit high, just given the, the period of time and, and what went on with the sheriff's office. You know, if we would have looked at this as of May first, or if we look at it again in August or September, that number might be a little low, but typically we are we are running quite a few positions vacant and all time through the years.
It equates to about twelve percent and typically we're from ten to fifteen percent or eight to fifteen percent, depending on the year. So it's not, it's not a number that's uh, of concern in comparison to previous years. We're kind of still in that same ballpark. Typically, it was CCS has always been understaffed.
Right.
Rome Bridge has always been understaffed, now Rome Bridge is doing a little bit better and, um, so. What would you add?
Well, I was, I was just gonna mention this kind of indicator was one that we looked at a couple of times last fall. Because we had pretty significant, um, you know, vacancy savings from uh, vacant positions last year. If I recall correctly, we were in a one point two million dollar range at the end of the year. And so, you know, it's, it's nice if this is a linear value, which salaries does tend to be a linear expense. Um, we're, we're kind of on track to have more full employment this year, which is nice. Um, but we know we're gonna have some variability as we go from month to month. Um, you know, when I look at this, as Mike mentioned, I don't see anything concerning and I, I know for a fact because I said across the hall from the H R director and I know they're doing onboarding, I know they did a couple onboardings today, that we're we are doing pretty well at filling some positions, which is great. Um, and so I, I think that's one indicator I've been thinking about, um, is how much did we have last year? And we're kind of on a, on a trajectory to, to actually be in a pretty decent place compared.
Thank you for that context.
And so the last thing that I just wanted to point out is that we are not recommending doing a sub, uh, mid-year supplemental appropriation process at this time, based on these numbers. Any further questions? Mike, you, you want to add?
No.
Ramona, do we need to accept this report or merely say thank you to Paige?
That's it.
Thanks.
Well, I'll say the thank you and I'll also say I really appreciate the first sentence under outlook and recommendations, which is at the end of April twenty twenty five, the county is in a sound financial position.
Yeah, thanks for your work.
Yes.
You're very welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Good to see all of you.
You too. Say hi to the rest of the team.
You will.
Right. Okay, moving on now, we are on, uh, nine A, natural resources and climate resilience. We plan to discuss and review the topics which will include the Grand Mesa Uncompagre and Gunnison National Forest South Uncompagre Hazardous Fuels and Ecological Resilience Project, a comment letter that Star Jamison, our director, is proposing. Hi, Star.
Hello. I, um, have started drafting the letter. That is due on July eleventh, so at the end of the week. Um, this was a thirty day comment period. Um, and I was only able to meet with, um, Megan Eno yesterday, so that's why the letter, I, I've drafted it and provided the topics, um, and then went over those with her to determine if we needed to include those in the letter or, um, we could just remove them. So this project, um, is gonna take place here near Norwood and I've um, included just the little arrows to show, um, where this project will take place um, in these maps. So we have, uh, near Miramonte, just south of Norwood, and then we have east of Norwood um, listed here. So just, I thought I would just do a brief, uh, understanding of NEPA. What the scoping process is, the scoping process is, um, to help the Forest Service determine what's important and what should go into the environmental assessment, the E A. So this is just the first round thirty day comment period of what they should include, what they should analyze, what's important to the public. Um, this is a twenty year project. That automatically was a concern. Um, and so after talking to the Forest Service, Megan Eno, she said she wants the timeframe to be large. She wants to be able, she said this could potentially happen in five years, ten years, more like ten, but, um, it's, she wants the ability to have a larger timeframe for the project.
Why is that?
Um, uh, funding, um, there's a lot of pieces to it. This is a pretty large project. It is a very large scope. It goes across, uh, three counties. Um, and so, you know, just the, the projects alone, um, the one thing about this and the documents that they provided, they don't have the specific project details. Um, those are gonna have to be figured out. Um, this is more of a programmatic NEPA, and what that means is that um, they go through this process as an E A and it's similar to the Spudmer process, which then they will go on individual basis of each project with a thirty day scoping or a thirty day, uh, comment period based on that. Um, the Spudmer project was a ten-year project, just for your information. Um, so this project overview, um, involves civil, uh, civil culture treatments, hazardous fuels treatments and wildlife habit habitat improvements. Um, these are commercial and non-commercial timber harvests. Um, the hazardous fuels, um, broadcast burning, pile burning, chipping, mastication. Um, and then wildlife improvements that, um, involved, uh, big game uh, and sagebrush shrublin habitat improvements. I put this in here because I'm gonna talk about it and just to give you a, a visual and understanding of of what some of these comments I'm including. So in the projects, when they design the projects within this very large scope, they have these design features. They pull out here on the right side, the source is from the new forest management plan. So they'll take the standards and guidelines from the forest management plan and incorporate those into these de- design features. So some of my comments involved adding some of these in here or correcting some of them. Um, in the meeting, I brought up a few and they said just add it into the comments that needed to be corrected. So these are the comments that I'm including. These are overall, some of these slides are just gonna have a bunch of words on them. Don't worry about it, you can ask questions if you want, if, if you have specific questions, but they're literally the I've pulled them out of the forest plan to say, hey, you need to include this, you need to think about climate change or or whatnot into your project management. So we have the lessons learned, they were, they asked that. So what have we seen from Spudmer that we would like change and to consider for this new project? Um, climate change and adaptation, um, as I went through, I didn't see anything on climate change and adaptation, and that was a large part that we advocated for in the forest plan that I think that we need to add into here for consideration. Gunnison sagegrass habitat, um, and then specific design features to add in. Um, wildlife management areas which are new to this forest plan, um, retaining old growth um, and, uh, old ponderosa pine that are over five years old. Monitor, monitoring gamble oak dominance, consideration of alternatives to pile burning. Um, NEPA and just provide additional information to E A just to help inform comments. So, um, I spoke to Kay Simonson, our planning director, um, we've had problems in the past with Spudmer because of the nature of a programmatic E A. Um, the Forest Service also in our land use code, um, they are technically not required to get a special use permit with the county. So that has left us, um, sort of behind when we learn later about a project, we'll, we'll put our comments in for the thirty days and then they will go out and do the project and the Forest Service have the contract, so we don't get to talk to the contractors about hauling noxious weeds. And so we've had multiple conversations with them and I know that we're gonna bring them in when we update the land use code for, um, forest management logging, et cetera. So in here, we're just requesting that they, um, work with the hall permits to work with Ryan Rigetti, to work with our weed coordinator Julie Kulp and have these discussions, um, on weed management and such. Um, they also um they will not have to um provide like an environmental assessment. They'll ha- they have a checklist essentially. So I'm requiring here that they provide the planning department and uh natural resources department with that checklist to determine like that they were analyzed links habitat, watersheds, etc. Um, also enhance public commenting and transparency through targeted outreach um and improved online um platforms because the current platforms are very hard to navigate and they will agree with us on that as well. It's confusing. They're not user friendly and there's a lot of broken links. So um whatever transparency they can do for the public to actually make a comment would would be a big um benefit uh and improvement over the Spudmer process. Um, also thinking about our uh how we've been involved in Spudmer. Um, that I have here of creating these core project groups. Um, right now, you uh you can travel to Gunnison County and go to a project or you can um travel wherever their their next project is. Um, and just the the recommendation of creating a core project group who are scientists, who are their foresters, etc. And not have this larger group who might not be interested in going to Gunnison County and and being part of that, which currently um Commissioner Waring and I are and I typically don't won't go to Gunnison to a project area. Um, but you know, to have the local pro- the local participants who are interested and and really promote that so the public understands what's going on.
Just please.
Um, so let's see, also just the wildfire risk mitigation, um especially within the Wui. That this should be prioritized um versus um, you know, the the standard timber sale. Um, each project should really have clearly defined goals that are transparent to the public and available. Um, and if it's not feasible after analysis, um the final list of potential impacts and reasoning should be disclosed.
Star, did you get any further info from from Megan Eno about piling and burning or the potentiality of, I I know there's mention of a curtain burner potentially?
We'll get to that.
Okay, okay, jump on the gun here.
We will get to that. And a lot of words on here. These are just some things I'm gonna pull out of the forest plan and include in here that need to be included in their design features, which um are managing the ecosystems, forest um product markets. Um, none of this is in here um from the forest plan and add in, I mean, we fought pretty hard to um to have them include climate adaptation and into the plan. So having this into a twenty year project, I think is important. Here we have more climate change and this is just adding this into the project design. Um, understanding the uncertainty in the future, design wildfire risk and forest restoration treatments. Sagegrass habitat. Um, so this project, um the OA Gregor parcel is within the boundaries of the project. Um, Janet Caskin and I have gone out and we went out with West Region to look at this parcel and try to determine um if we needed to do any work in this area. Um, Mike Bordania and I have discussed, um we knew that they would be doing work um in this area. And so if they could potentially look at this area, so we feel that this would be a good area to add on through a um good neighbor agreement. Um, and to look at this for improvements to habitat, because that is actually part of this project is habitat improvement. Um, so actually take this property and um because it's within the project boundary and determine um you know, how we could improve the watershed, the forest, etc. in this area. Um, the um our parcel, I would say is maybe a third to a fourth forested on that parcel. It's mostly Gunnison sagegrass and that's why it was protected. That's why it's under a conservation easement. So um we didn't feel like at that moment like that we needed to jump on this, like we had such a small um amount of trees on that parcel. Um, so it would be better fit to add into this larger scale scope of a project.
Star, if you could go back to that slide, I'm not positive, but I'm ninety seven percent certain that the spelling of Gregor has an A instead of two Es.
Oh, it does. Yeah. G R E A.
That's funny. I I Googled that multiple times and I even went to our website and it's E E G O R. Cause I had an A on it too.
Good.
Um, I will look again. On the old topo maps, it's E E as well.
I've been spelling it wrong.
I've I've done that too.
We can just do both.
Yeah. Um, here we have some of the other additions to the design features, working with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Um, and I also contacted them to look through and they uh they do not have their comments in yet. So I I talked to Evan about that because of our consultation that we typically do with Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Um, also here, just adding in the sagebrush ecosystems. Um, this is all part of their forest plan that I feel that they could add in here. Um, enhancing habitat. Um, this is one thing that CPW did mention um in these areas was just um this new uh special management area um requires a um uh route density within the polygon. And some of these treatments are gonna be within which are allowed in in wildlife management areas. Um, but just some of our uh suggestions are prioritize prioritizing existing um routes that are in there to use for roads. Because in these forest um projects, they typically will have to go in and put new roads in. So please prioritize existing routes because they have addressed that in these areas, there are a lot of user created routes, so use those. Um, and then they should be immediately closed, including revegetation, eliminating noxious weed. And um also have a monitoring plan in place to keep those roads closed and that was uh what CPW also suggested. Um, retaining old growth. Um, so they, there's a lot of studies just learning that after five years that ponderosa pine will have um it's less likely to be um affected by fire. So all research to look through here and to um keep some of these old growth and these larger trees that we have on the landscape. And to look at new science as well. Also monitoring, controlling gamble oak dominance um in these forests because this species will tend to take over. Um, and um I brought this up to them on Tuesday as well and they agreed and along with this comes like monitoring comes with the proper um reseeding and such to make sure that ponderosa pine does come back in these forests. Cause we don't want gamble oak to end up taking over, because then you end up having a whole nother wildfire problem. There we go. Here is your topic. Um, so um they've mentioned pile burning, which we've seen in areas and um I would like to get in here just alternatives to that. And um I spoke to Shannon Armstrong and she thought that Montress County might have purchased one that might be able to use be used regionally and I have not been able to uh or had the time to contact them to see. It's also something that we have discussed that maybe there's a grant available right now for this too. Um, but what these do um are they reduce greenhouse gas emissions and they also reduce the the what's that?
What are they?
They burn it at a really high temperature.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're mobile.
Yeah, yeah.
They can provide biochar.
Talk about this in
Yeah.
Under context.
They can, uh, you can see in this photo, like there's a tractor there plugged into one of those, so they can provide energy. Um, so over a twenty year period, it would be useful for them to um to consider something like this over twenty years. Um, because they're gonna have a lot of slash piles. I mean, thinking about this landscape here with lots of canyon, with lots of shrubs.
Star, I'm intrigued with the mention you made of the grant possibility and I'm curious where that sits and what the price tag is for one of these. It seems like it might be something that we, the county, might want to own and whether we run land or lease that equipment out in the future, it seems like having it on deck would help a lot of our partners and potentially help a lot of our partners, both public and private. Can you give us any insight as to what grant and where we sit and how much one of these things costs on the free market?
Um, I started doing this research maybe like a year ago. I, the one fact I do know is August twenty ninth is the deadline for the grant. It's a state grant, um Eco Action Partners, um Siobhan actually sent it to me. Um, and they said that they would um if they would help draft like a a grant proposal for that. I spoke to Shannon about it and and asked if she had um any thoughts um to go along with that. And she said, well, actually, Montress County might have and they might, the intention might be to share it regionally. So I wanted to ask that because um there's the issue of where do you store it? Who runs it? Because I think you have to be certified to like run this machine. Um, you need a certain uh footprint.
Let's do this. Um, why don't you try to expedite communication with Montress County? But simultaneously ask Siobhan to start considering that grant? Because whether or not we can borrow Montress County's, there still might be an advantage to us over twenty years to having our own. If this window is only till the end of August, it seems like we might as well start to get that grant process rolling and if there's two in the region, so much the better.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think some neighboring counties like Yarra County comes to mind, might be interested in these things. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for collaborating and
Ryan, oh, I know, I'll just think of, sorry, I didn't mean to say Lawrence County, they're doing a lot of live timber operations, right?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any harm in trying to get one of our, uh, someone else's dime. And if we are successful, we'll figure out where to store it and we'll get someone to operate.
I was gonna say, I haven't asked Ryan yet about the Norwood shop. Just space that we might have available for something like this.
We'll find space.
Yeah.
Please, please proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
It's a big county.
Um, here we have NEPA just mentioning that um that NEPA actually requires uh alternatives to have no action and the comparison between no action and um the action alternatives. Um, so we just include, we're urging the Forest Service to include a description of the no action alternative and clear direct comparison of the impacts. So provide additional information in the EA to inform comments. Um, just additional maps with overlays. Um, I had some concerns with the Colorado roadless areas. I was just take, we didn't, I didn't have the data. Um, they provided the data for us, but I think it would expedite a lot of concern for roadless areas for wildlife habitat if they included those um maps in there to show um current conditions, um old growth, big game, forest type. Um, and include acreages of old growth, um ecosystems and ponderosa pine. Move that back. And so, could I get approval to include these topics into the letter to the Forest Service?
I believe that makes perfect sense. Anybody feel differently?
Uh, no, I think that you identified some really important points to bring up there. Yeah, and that's interesting about the, I didn't know that that factoid about ponderosa pines being over five years actually create some high resistance. That's interesting.
I had a question on Star. When I looked at the maps, it looks like all of the suggested work over the next twenty years is on around this area of the county.
Right.
And was there any consideration given to working on the east end of the county? Um, because that is where we have so much population and buildings and insect infestations and I think there's, you know, uh, equal, if not even more concern about, well, I would say equivalent, you know, concern about wildfire out there.
I think we could add that comment, you know, that we have.
Did you have, do you know anything about why that wasn't considered?
Mm-hmm. I I do not. I I don't know if it's forest type.
Um, right, like is it more Montane forest?
Um, and right, and the ability to proceed with uh these treatments probably without greater resistance that might happen in the east end of the county.
Be resistance for wildfire mitigation.
Well, another um data point that I've heard Megan bring up is that most of the wildfires that we've experienced recently happened
in this area.
Right.
Uh, anyway, I I'm
I think we could.
Curious to know why it wasn't considered or if it was considered, why it's not part of the plan.
And that's always
Over the next, because what I'm hearing is the Forest Service may not address wildfire mitigation on the east end of the county in the next twenty years and that is a bit concerning to me.
A lot of these comments can be questioned, so I think
Okay.
It's it's completely reasonable to add that in.
Okay.
You just that we have a concern on the east end as well and so um what is the plan for the future of of mitigation projects?
That would be, that'd be great. And that said, I will say that this whole, the fact that this is plan is happening is very um encouraging. And I hope that our letter will say that generally we're super supportive of this, of this twenty year effort.
Um, yeah, and I'd like to phone in just on information I gathered from Jason Seibold and a lot of the um beetle kill that is in the down valley area specifically around saw pit and how that has really um evolved quickly and the the kind of the fire, the wildfire models showing that that area is really at risk and then the models showed who the fires would generally move west to east based on predominant wings and then there's just more available fuels that are, you know, kind of evolving with the beetle kill the warming. So yeah, I I support what Ann is saying, just to ask, ask why and bring bring that to their attention that seems a necessity to have some sort of a management plan for that portion of the forest.
Yeah.
Right.
And Star, you had mentioned when you verbally that the um comments were due on the eleventh, but your memo and the Forest Service memo says the tenth, which is tomorrow. Actually, the Forest Service memo was dated June tenth, so I assume July tenth is the deadline. I just didn't want you to miss it by one day.
So in our meeting on, we went back and forth in our meeting on Tuesday, they said the eleventh. And they also said that if comments come in after that, that they were gonna take them.
Good, because you've done so much work. I wouldn't want you to get it all done and uh have it turned away since you missed the deadline.
That is um something that Megan Eno said too, is that she's open, call her, you know, if she, anyone had any questions. Um, because they didn't hold a public meeting for this, so um there were concerns that she was, she has an open door that she would listen to those. Um.
Star, the your uh ability to tackle projects like this is really impressive. And the depth of your knowledge and your background that you bring to this is really valuable. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just have one more slide because we're in Norwood. Um, this was something that the Backcountry Hunters and Anglers sent, that there's going to be a um a fence pole here on the eighteenth. a fence pole here on the eighteenth, uh, through the twentieth, and they will have a, um, a, uh, campout and barbecue and, uh, picnic and such to go along with this out by Miramonte Reservoir. So they wanted to, um, for us to promote that.
It sounds fun, but what's a fence pole?
Um, it's for wildlife fencing, so, um.
Getting rid of fencing, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just to allow for easier migration for the wild.
Fantastic.
But you gotta wear gloves.
I got gloves.
Yeah, you do.
I got gloves. Heard them this morning in my garden.
So I just wanted to share that, um.
This anecdote, I was excited to see this and signed up for a day that I had available because spring, I watched and I've heard of elk run and jumping the fence and one got caught and seen really injured on that, this property actually. So it was like, oh, wow. I wanna go help that
Yeah.
Situation for sure.
Absolutely.
You do that and I'll go to the, um, the thing that Sarah was having. Oh, okay, the appeals process, the assessment process. All right. Star, thank you so much. Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you for coming over with us too. All right, we are moving on now to item number ten, Manager Matters. Mike Fordonia.
Thank you, and, uh, thanks to Carmen for putting in the memo with the statutory citation. Um, so it came to our attention that of our library board, we currently have six members.
Is it the Lone Cone Library?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, for the Lone Cone Library Board, statute allows for a minimum of five members, a maximum of seven members. There are currently six members, um, but the statute says that all six have to reside, um, in the district, not just uh, pay taxes into the district. Um, so obviously we know that they are in the midst of trying to hire an executive um, to run the library, uh, co, co-director, I believe. And so we want it, I think that there's a question, uh, because the commissioners are the appointing board of the members of the library board. And it says that if anybody were to be removed from the library board, that a quorum of the commissioners would need to vote for that, the removal. Um, it's my understanding that, uh, of the existing library, Lone Cone Library Board members, um, they understand the, the statutory issue with the two members, but that would leave them if they were to be removed at four members, which then creates an issue both statutorily, but also in the operations and trying to, to solicit for candidates. So, um, the simple kind of solution is we understand that those two members are, will be ineligible from continuing on long term, but, uh, as well as we wouldn't want to jeopardize, um, having them vote on the new, um, director of the library. So the question is, could they remain on until such time as we can fill those vacancies? And keep their institutional knowledge and contributions, um, that have been valuable. So, uh, until such time as there are additional new board members that could take their places. Um, they, if there were a vote on the new director to occur before, um, before new members were appointed by the commissioners, um, then we would ask those two that are not residing in the district not to participate in that vote. Um, but they could potentially participate in, um, any background information or conversation, but just not be voting on such matters. So as not to jeopardize, uh, the decisions by, uh, law, um, that could be made.
Maura, did you, thank you, Mike. Maura, did you have something you'd like to comment?
No, Mike covered it. I just, I'm here if there's questions about
Thank you.
How to handle it.
Thank you. And I see that Carrie Bentler, the, um, current co-director, I'm sorry if I have your title incorrect, Carrie, of the Lone Cone Libraries here. Is there something you'd like to add, Carrie? If so, please unmute yourself. And if you'd like to be on video, we'd love to see you.
Carrie, I'm sorry, we're having trouble. Could you speak louder or turn up your volume?
Right. Is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Um, I have been co-director all of forty-eight hours, so, um, was
You're killing it, Carrie.
Trying to figure out all of this stuff while I was still office managing. Um, so that's correct. We have two board members that, um, live out of our special district. Um, however, if they were to be removed, that would only leave us four, as you already said. So, um, I'm asking that they at least are allowed to stay until we have the other co-director chosen so that we can move forward. Um, one has been on the board for almost two years and the other one was appointed in December. Um, neither one was appointed by me, so one was from the way previous director and one was from the, just the last current director, so, um.
Commissioner Brown?
Um, yes.
Thanks, Carrie. This is Lance Waring. I can't seem to get my video to work, but I am happy to see you on the screen and I am, um, understanding that we're in a small predicament. I guess I've got a question for Mike or Maura, which is how much oversight do you think that the state has of this? And if we were to make the lesser of two evils decision and follow Mike's advice, keeping the two folks on the board as long as need be with intent to replace them as quickly as possible, that feels to me like the more effective solution. And Maura, unless you know that there's an annual checkup and that it's coming in in the next month, it feels like we're probably gonna be able to just, um, finesse this.
Yeah, I don't, not, I'm not aware of any, you know, particular oversight. Um, and since there would be, the board would be facing a violation either way by not having enough members or having technically unqualified members. And, and we've dealt with this in other boards as well, where we've made the decision to, until a qualifying member steps up to fill the position that we err towards accepting the volunteerism of people willing to serve on the board.
By keeping the board, um, able to conduct business, which really seems to be the key here. Uh, with that, I would suggest that we accept Mike's proposal and proceed as, as directed.
So I, I, I like that proposal as well. I have a couple of points I wanna just clarify with Carrie. Carrie, you had suggested that these folks stay until the new director is in place. While Mike had, which I know will be, at least the vote should happen within the next couple of months. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Mike had suggested that they stay until they can be replaced? Do you have a preference for the one that Mike suggested versus the one you suggested?
Um, Mike's suggestion makes more sense because if, if they're removed, it still leaves us four. So, yeah.
Okay, um, and then my other question, until they are replaced, and then how do you feel about those two board members who are not fully qualified, um, recusing themselves from the vote of the new director?
I can't speak for them, so I, I, I can ask them not to do that, or one of you guys can ask them not to do that.
But do you have a concern about that?
Um, I, I don't.
If you choose to take, to, to provide that direction?
The only one I'm, um, one of them's not even on the hiring committee, so the hiring committee is doing all the interviews and, um, all of that for the, the co-directors. The other one's not on the hiring committee, but then the hiring committee goes back to the whole board and the board votes. So even if they both recuse from voting, we still have a quorum, because we still have four. So, um, yeah.
Problem solved.
Yep, that's great. I'm glad that you and are aligned with Mike's, um, suggestion. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this, whether in the room or online?
I, I'd also like to just make a quick comment about, um, just for the future, and since, since you're serving as co-director, Carrie, um, considering putting this language in the bylaws, because they're not laid out specifically in the library bylaws. It might just be helpful for future boards to
Absolutely. Moving forward, um, I'll make sure that is in there, but.
That's a really good call, Galena, because it's in statute, but not in the bylaws. And that's probably what people look at when they're making an appointment.
Yeah, it would be hard, rare to look up state statute if you're just a citizen
Yeah.
Serving the community on board, so, yeah.
Perfect. Um, Nina Coth, um, I saw your hand was raised. Do you mind stepping forward so you can be under our space age speaker? Or actually, that one right there, I think, works too, right? The disc on the table. No, no, you should probably come up.
Yeah, well, she, that should capture her.
Yeah, I'm just It's gonna be quick. Um, one of the members that in question is on our, um, hiring committee. So as long as, when it comes to that final vote, that's what you're concerned about, not
Correct.
For participation on the hiring committee. Okay, that's all, that's all. Thanks for clarifying that. Um, all right, any other comments or questions? Okay, so I think we have our direction that, um, these well-meaning, hard-serving, long, uh, volunteers will remain on the board until they are replaced. And in the meantime, they will recuse themselves, um, from voting on the, um, appointment of the new co-director. Um, and I assume that we will be continually, as we do, advertising this, these vacancies?
We will. And, um, if I can, um, just say that I'll follow up with Carrie and the board and um, discuss this and what the wishes of the board is.
Great. Okay. Um, and again, also, sorry, uh, Galena's suggestion that they update their bylaws to include that. Great. All right, I don't think we need any motions or anything. You just have those three pieces of clear direction. And thank you for all of the staff and also to Carrie for looking into this so carefully and coming up with a, a elegant solution. Okay, I believe, oh, Mike, anything else on?
Yes, thank you. Just a few brief updates and a few, a couple of questions for you. Obviously, for the public's knowledge, we did not hold a regular meeting last, uh, Wednesday on July second. Um, one of the reasons that we are meeting today in a special meeting so that the board could take action on numerous issues. This past Monday on July seventh, at the SMRHA board meeting, there was a presentation of the Housing Needs Assessment conducted by EPS. Um, and that information can be found on the SMRHA website.
Um, I have a question about that.
Yes.
Um, in terms of next steps, I know there were a few questions raised at that meeting by mostly elected officials. And I know Jared, you were jotting all those down.
Yes.
And those will be addressed. Um, I guess my question would be though, um, just to clarify for the public and us once again, our next steps following that Housing Needs Assessment are uh, by jurisdiction, a housing action plan. Is that correct?
Correct, Commissioner Brown. Um, the, the next steps in this statutory process, because we did get those new statutory rules with Senate Bill twenty-four dash one seventy-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to kind of take this first step of developing, uh, Housing Needs Assessment to, to understand what our housing need is. Uh, our community is pretty practiced at this because we've been doing housing needs assessments for a lot longer than most local governments. And then our next steps, um, are to have, as you said, a housing action plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, every jurisdiction of a thousand pop or more is supposed to develop one of those.
Okay.
And so that is, that's where each one of our individual organizations is required. We could do a joint plan and as we said at that meeting, we, we have not determined exactly how we want to pursue that. But our, we do know that we will have a lot of crossover between our plans, however it gets pulled together, so.
That's great. Thank you for that. Uh, one thing I thought that was interesting that came out of that was someone asked what, um, the EPS, what they thought, um, opportunities for federal funding was. And he was pretty clear and by saying that, um, local governments need to be self-sufficient for this kind of housing development. Which was good, just practical information to have.
And, and I think to add on that, Commissioner Brown, um, I, I think the federal government has always had, um, low-income tax financing, um, but that has always come with like a sixty percent AMI requirement. And we know that we need a much broader, um, array of affordable housing than just sixty percent AMI. So even if we do tap federal funds and federal resources or state funds and state resources, I think we know we have a lot of other, uh, areas of, um, income distribution that we have to hit, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, yesterday I met with representatives from T-Mobile, um, in part because they offer a broader coverage than any of our existing cell phone providers do. Um, specifically coverage throughout Norwood Canyon and San Miguel Canyon, as well as up Highway sixty-two. And so I will be having another meeting with them to get pricing and compare what our current deals are, uh, as it relates to our AT&T product that we're with. Uh, and I'll bring that to you at a future meeting for your consideration. I will be gone, um, tomorrow and Friday. Thank you for that time off. And then when I'm back, I'll be back for a very long time. You've got all my vacations in a, in a two-week span. Um, and tomorrow afternoon, though, at three PM is your SMART regular board meeting. Next Wednesday, uh, the sixteenth is a regular BOCC meeting as and has, has been previously mentioned, that additional conversation regarding the deed restrictions um, and laying use code and covenant discussion. It was listed as two sessions again, uh, on our future meetings. And I suppose we were hoping to perhaps do that as one larger session, perhaps in the evening, instead of redoing the two, given our experience of basically seeing both all the same people, or the majority of same people. I do think having it in the evening is a little more accommodating to our working, um, residents. And it gives everybody kind of equal access versus those that are able to take off from work or who may be retired versus those, um, you know, in our working community. So I want to get your feedback on that. Would you be amenable to the one session at five PM, five to seven PM?
Um, I don't remember seeing tons of people repeating, but I do like your point about everybody having the same information, being part of the same conversation. And your point about, um, five to seven accommodates a lot of people than if we did a daytime. So I'm, I'm good with that. I don't know, kind of, the rest of you feel?
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent. We will amend the future meeting, um, page then.
And we, yeah, we should definitely let the HOAs know as well if, uh, however we do that.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Um.
Deed restricted HOAs.
On the afternoon of the sixteenth, there is a Community Wildfire Protection Plan meeting. I know Star will be attending that, as will our emergency management folks. I don't know if any of you were planning to be a part of that. But, uh, that's scheduled from three to five PM and those, some of you, I believe, were invited for that.
What was that again?
That's the CWPP, the Wildfire Protection Plan Update.
Oh, I'd like to go there.
When is that?
It's three PM, three to five on the sixteenth. So we could keep our meeting a little bit more brief, try and wrap up by two. That allows you the time to attend the CWPP and then start again at five for our.
I would really like to attend that, just to get updated. I would, yeah.
Me too.
Connect some dots with the CWP and have some.
I don't think I received that invitation, so could we, um, how would we find, get that?
Uh, Shannon Armstrong was coordinating those invitations, so we'll reach out to her.
Okay.
Um, as of now, I've been called for jury duty on Thursday, the seventeenth, but hopefully similar to all the previous times I've been called, uh, they've canceled. So, um, hopefully I will be here on the seventeenth. Um, but if not, I'll notify you that morning if I'm called. Um, the next and last big thing is that, uh, September, September, July twenty-fifth is the county's deadline to notify the county clerk of any ballot questions for the November ballot. Um, and then we would have until September fifth to certify any language that we wished for a question or questions. Um, so I know we haven't had any discussion. I'm just planting the seed now, uh, for you to think about some of the things. And last time we ran a question to allow, uh, And last time we ran a question to allow, uh, three terms for commissioners. Many counties, now that the lodging tax, um, rules have changed from the state and counties are allowed to go from our, uh, it's point nine tenths of a percent to two percent. We're currently at two percent for our lodging tax. Um, however, it would allow up to four percent additional lodging tax, uh, if the voters approved it to be collected for specific purposes. And there's a pretty good list of, uh, things that it can go for, housing, childcare, um, enhancing visitor experience such as recreation facilities and cultural attractions, maintenance of public infrastructure such as roads and utilities, public safety, funding for law enforcement and emergency medical service. Um, and so I know that La Plata County has indicated they're applying or asking their voters to allow them to reallocate its traditional use, which was marketing. It was solely limited to marketing, uh, for tourism. To, they're asking their voters to reallocate it for childcare and housing. Eagle County has indicated that they are going to ask for the additional four percent, um, to go for housing and childcare. And just as a basis of comparison, uh, our county lodging tax is at two percent. However, the town of Telluride is at six and a half percent with numerous, uh, chunks of that, over four percent going towards housing. That's part of the reason they have such a robust housing fund. I know that we were in apples and oranges with our approximate hundred thirty-five, uh, short-term rental units that are in the, uh, unincorporated county versus they have a significantly greater percentage. Um, for also for reference, Mountain Village, um, on top of their nine-plus percent sales tax has five and a quarter percent of additional tax for short-term rentals and lodging. So if we were to ask our voters for an additional amount, if you wanted to allocate it for some specific uses, whether it be roads, law enforcement, childcare, or housing, or affordable housing purposes, I just wanted to plant that seed for you to think about for, um, perhaps a more robust discussion next week or even the week after, but the deadline would be the twenty-first for us to notify the clerk. And at that point, we don't have to say what the question's going to be. It's just simply a notice that we would have a question or questions on the November ballot.
So at this point, I, I think that let's think about it, but I just want to ask a question.
Sure.
Um, could we have a ballot question that didn't raise the tax?
Yes.
Just allowed authorization to use the existing tax for something different?
Absolutely.
Okay, but right now we don't collect that much lodging tax, right?
Uh, approximately eighty thousand dollars each.
Right, and we use that to go to marketing.
Correct.
Okay, so if we wanted to reallocate it, there wouldn't be any money for marketing?
Um, you could bifurcate it. You could, you could slice it any which way, and that's exactly what La Plata County is doing. They're keeping their two percent lodging tax, but they want to ask their voters to re, uh, the authority to reallocate it.
And would we have to be specific about how we're reallocating it, or could we say at the discretion of the commissioners?
I would list this, it does ask you to list the specific uses, but you could keep them broad enough to allow yourself the latitude to shift between, you know, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent towards those listed uses.
You don't have to say like a third of it to this.
Correct. You can keep in marketing tourism to allow for the portions such as, you know, we want Norwood to keep a hundred percent of theirs for tourism if they wish. But perhaps on the east end, we're looking at things such as roads, which are a constant additional need and/or law enforcement or housing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
No, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
My pleasure. That's all I have for you today. Jared, do you have anything?
I did want to let the commissioners know, um, because it's been a topic of conversations come up recently. We are under contract for the repairs of Tomboy Road. Um, so we are under contract. We're moving ahead, I believe, uh, in my conversations with our contractor, they've initiated design. Um, so we have a design phase. We have to get approved from the Forest Service for that design phase. We're slated to get that done within the month of July, and then they'll be moving towards construction, so. Um, I, you know, there have been a few questions swirling around that, and so I did want to make sure you commissioners were aware of that. Um.
You know, since there is so much interest in that, is that something we could, um, update on our social media account or something as well? Is it time for that? Or is it sort of no news, really?
It's kind of no news. It's nice to be under contract and, you know, there's not going to be earthwork in the next couple of weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think once we actually move towards construction, that's an appropriate place. Um, because we also want to make sure people aren't traveling up that road, or, you know, they're going to expect some delays if they are uh, traveling, you know, by foot or by bicycle or things like that, so.
I, I, yeah, I think you're right. There's, it's kind of like a no news thing. Um, but we're not, we're not behind schedule and we're not under construction.
But I know you have been asked, because a few of you have asked me, so I wanted to make sure and, and let everybody know the same information, so.
Perfect.
Um, other than that, I think we covered the Board of Equalization hearings. Uh, we, we did have a, another meeting, uh, for our planning staff, Kay, Dreah, myself, with Logan Simpson, who are doing our housing, uh, code evaluation. We're still working on what exactly to call that thing and brand it, and they are actually working on that. But, um, they were discussing the community engagement plan. And they plan, uh, because they're gonna be in town for the Town of Telluride's process anyway on the twenty-third. So we have scheduled to have them come, give a little bit of a, a presentation on the community engagement plan that they are developing for our process, uh, get any feedback from you on that, and, uh, you know, just give you all kind of a kickoff to what that project's gonna look like as well.
Great. One thing that, um, I was thinking about today is if they could give us a recommendation on the size and composition of the community work group, that would be helpful. What they recommend.
I.
Great, so I think we've all been kind of pondering that, what that might look like.
It's always the perpetual challenge. It needs to be big enough to have all the voices, but small enough to work.
Fun to measure, like, to experience.
And, and we'll make sure that they are prompted with, uh, some of those ideas, so.
Uh, oh, yes, it looks like a member of the public has, oh, it's not the public. There are, okay, Simonson, hi there, Kay, please.
Yeah, just wanted to let you know that we're working to, um, get, uh, ads in the paper, uh, soliciting, uh, interested parties. And, uh, you know, they can go and submit their applications through the portal. Um, so those ads should be hitting the papers this weekend, um, hopefully Sunday, probably. I don't think we'll make Friday. Uh, but we'll run them in all the papers and, but we'll, we'll continue working on the composition of, of the, uh, of it and, uh, you know, come back to you with some, uh, um, you know, recommendations and suggestions. Ultimately, you guys appoint, so, you know, you, you do have a lot of latitude in that. But we'll be, we'll be giving you some guidance.
Thank you for mentioning that, Kay. I mean, this is a, um, a really important part of the process for the commissioners, and so I would just be curious to know what that ad is gonna say, so that it actually reflects what our vision is for this work group as well.
Yeah, because it's a display ad, it's really short and sweet what we've got drafted up. Um, uh, but yeah, I can share that with you.
Great, just that'd be, I would like to just take a peek at it to make sure it's general enough that we have some, um, input into what it eventually looks like. Uh, okay, thank you, Kay.
And I think the last thing I have is similar to Mike. Uh, I don't have any vacation scheduled, but I will be working remotely the week of the twelfth. So, um, that's all I've got.
Jared, you need a vacation too.
One of these days.
Um, we have run into our public, uh, our listening session time, and I was just wondering if the commissioners had anything really important that we needed to update each other on, or maybe we could wait till next week for that? That'd be good, particularly since one of our people who is going to make some comments of the listening session has a baby and that we don't want to hold up. Um, all right, does anyone need a quick break before we start that public listening session, or?
I apologize, I need to.
I know you need to go in for a break.
Yes.
Um, I can, I can use two minutes.
Yeah.
Promise it's a real two minutes.
Yeah, let's take two minutes and then we'll start with you, um, Annika. All right, hello, San Miguel County. It is five thirty PM, and we are running a little late, but we've had a productive afternoon. Um, we are going to begin now our listening session with anybody who is interested in tuning in, whether online or, um, or in the room, and we do have a few members of the public here. Thank you for being with us. This is something I don't think we've done previously in Norwood, but we did do it, we do do it in Egner and also in Platterville, and so there was some scheduling confusion, and we thought, let's just try it and see how it goes and see if, um, people, um, find this useful, um, on Rights Mesa here. And the way we have structured this in the past, um, in other, um, communities is that we have kind of just provided some updates from, um, staff and the commissioners if relevant. Um, just briefly in the beginning to kind of get ahead of any questions, so that we can have some sort of organization to the conversation. And then once those updates, which are pretty brief, are complete, then we open it up to questions or comments from the public. So, um, we, Mikhail, we were going to start with you, but we have Annika here with her little baby Leo. And so if we're already behind for her, and since she's, um, handling a baby, I hope it will be okay with you if we let Annika go first. Uh, he's, uh, I'm not hearing no, so, uh, is he a co-host? So he did, okay. All right, so Annika, um, do you want to just come up a little closer to the speaker?
Yes.
Um, and, uh, and they're, are on the table here and up in the skies, so wherever you're comfortable.
I get Galena.
I was gonna say, I hold the baby.
You need to pat him down the line.
Yeah, that works.
Um, should I face this way or?
Face the public would be great, yeah.
Okay.
Right there.
Yeah.
Um, great, and then, um, Mike just asked me yesterday to do this, so did you guys want to hear more things about extension work or just about the fair?
Um, I, uh, maybe we should ask the public, actually, what they are interested in hearing about from Annika. Anything in particular? Uh.
So, I get the updates, I get the news.
You get the newsletter.
Yeah, yeah, just talking about the fair.
Right, great.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, we'll kick off on this Friday with our general projects, and we have kids in shooting sports and leather crafting and hick baking and food and nutrition, and so they'll be doing their interviews with our two judges. Uh, this year we have Adam Kudok, who's a good friend from, uh, Telluride, and, uh, Rhonda Oliver, who's, you may know through the library, from, from judging. And then on Saturday, we'll have the shooting sports, um, the shooting sports competition out at the Ten Ring Gun Club. This is our second year, uh, with our shooting sports program, and it's going really well. We're really happy with it. And at ten o'clock, so right after the shooting sports thing starts, they'll be running at the same time, we'll have our horse show. Now, there is, um, a horse virus going around that people may have heard about, uh, that started at the Jim Cana out in New Class. Uh, so we've reduced it just to our four H kids. So we'll just have four kids and their horses, which have been quarantined, uh, doing their drills. And then on Sunday, we'll all come together. All the kids will ascend onto the fairgrounds to help set up the fairgrounds, get everything ready and um, set up all the pens and fluff up all the shavings and, um, clean, clean the barn out, and it's kind of this big fun, energetic thing. After which we'll have a community potluck, uh, which the community is invited to. Anyone who wants to come. This is at seven thirty, and just bring a dish and show up and enjoy. Uh, and then on Tuesday, we'll have our all-species weigh-in, and we're going to have all the kids, uh, bringing their animals in early in the morning to beat the heat, and then we'll be calling them out. bringing their animals in early in the morning to beat the heat. And then we'll be calling them out, uh, species by species, starting with the swine, to do their, the final weigh. And so we'll see how much that they've gained over the year and if they're eligible to compete. And that afternoon, we'll have a presentation from Colorado State University doing carcass judging and looking at the animals via ultrasound to judge the carcasses. And on Wednesday, we start to really kick off into all of our shows. We have our swine show that night and and then it kind of continues on with our small animals the next day and goats and sheep the next night. And then onto beef on Friday night. And with that, we'll have sprinkled in some really fun community events and adventurous catch a chicken, which is new as of last year, uh, which is for the real little kids. We put saddles on chickens. And, uh, and then of course catch a calf, which we've been doing forever. And this year we'll have demos from Richard Post teaching fly fishing casting out on the lawn. This will be Friday at 10:30 and we'll also have hopefully Ken Curry with his honey to sell his honey and do honey tasting and a demo on eyes and beekeeping. And then Saturday morning, we'll have, um, the beginning of our livestock sale day. So big day. And we'll have a watermelon eating contest open to the public hosted by the council, four H council. Um, and we have some really fun prizes, trophies that I'm excited about.
And masters division. Well, there's, okay, so there's
the winner is a watermelon wizard. And then there's the grind runner up. And then there's, oh, I can't remember. They're all very good. And then we'll start with the luncheon at 11:30, the buyer's luncheon. Everyone in the community is welcome. I forget who's catering. Ah, it'll come to me, but maybe. Uh, and then we'll start with the livestock sale at one o'clock, which is a really fun and big event. If you haven't seen the auctioneer, I mean, for me, it was very exciting when I saw it. I hadn't seen anything like this. Uh, and then at the end of the evening, we have our final dance with all the kids, the family. And we'll have, um, chandeliers playing music for us. And I think that starts at eight o'clock. And so that's us for the fair and four H. And we have a lot of animals, lots of pigs, lots of goats this year. And, um, that's, that's all I have for there. If anyone has any questions or wants to show up.
No.
So I will ask everyone in this room to have a little assignment and to take some posters and some livestock sale posters. And to pass these out and post them up and stick them everywhere you can.
A little bit of that's okay.
Sure.
Want to leave them back there? We'll grab them.
I'll leave them out there. Yeah.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Coming after hours and bringing your little video from the bus to the hire.
To our council, four H council meeting. Very exciting. We're going to bring posicles out to Red Vale. And see the, uh, the leather craft goods are doing fine on night of leather crafting tonight. So let me see this guys. I would love to do a, um, follow up at some point with you guys because we have a lot of cool stuff planned for the fall. So I would love to update you.
Sure. Will you let Carmen know when you'd like to come in and see us and or be online or whatever?
Cool. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Oh, and, uh, thank you, Mikhail, for the idea.
Waiting and I'll put the areas.
I'll put these back here.
Perfect. All right. Mikhail, thank you for your patience. Um, we are excited to hear from you and your vet, as our veteran services officer. And what, just kind of update the Rights Mesa community or anyone who's listening on, on what you have to offer.
Of course. Can you hear me?
Perfect.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, Norwood Annex. Mikhail Madsen here. I'm the veteran service officer. Some updates from my office. We focus primarily on, of course, the United States military service members. We offer a few benefits to them. Mostly compensation through a claims, through service connection, pension, burial survivor benefits, VA healthcare, educational GI bill. And lately I've been doing a lot of grant writing, trying to get medical transportation available to Egner and Norwood and all those communities that are far away from our local clinics, which are located in Montrose for primary care and the Grand Junction VA hospital. Uh, my hours are Mondays, first Monday days of the month in Norwood. I was just there this last Monday with the community in the Glockson Center next to the Annex. First Tuesdays in the Telluride Library, second Tuesdays in the Sherbino Theater. Also every six months I do show up for these meetings as well in the Egner Community. Some of the updates we have, we've been, been very successful reaching out in the San Miguel County area to the veterans and local veterans have reached out to me and we're starting to get, uh, a lot of those claims that we've been developing for the last six months. I can say that since I started this position a year ago, it's increased our per capita expenditure. So we've gone from $50,000 incoming income to the county to almost $200,000 in compensation. And this is just in one year. So it's been, uh, three to four times ROI of what we've been doing. What else we can say? But, uh, as far as grant writing, we are also looking for the federal grant writing for highly rural medical transportation for this area. We're going to apply for that next year. Um, in the news, I, you know, I try not to read the bad news, but it has been posted that the administration is trying to cut 30,000 VA employees, veteran employees, um, by September. So we will see a decrease in some, an increase in some wait times for the appeals court and for the claims. And that was expected. Actually, that number came down from 89,000 when the administration first started, uh, six months ago. So it's a, it's some good news, but still bad news. Um, anyways, other than that, that is a quick update of what is going on. I will take any questions.
Nina Coth has a question.
Hi, I work at the library here in Norwood and I was wondering if you ever considered meeting with vets there because we actually help vets a lot. They come in to use our computers and we help them find documents that they need to apply for, uh, reimbursements of different kinds. And I really didn't even know about you, which, um, is understandable. I don't always pay close attention to everything going on with the county, but, um, that and also, gosh, I thought of a second thing. Well, definitely meeting maybe once in a while when you're, instead of at the Glockson Building, having your session at the library, because I could, we could be putting the word out to all of our veterans. Oh, I know. The second thing is I attend the senior lunches here in Norwood and we have a lot of veterans that come to that senior lunch. It's right over at Town Hall here in Norwood on Mondays and Thursdays of every single week. So, I mean, I know because they're always wearing their hats and I know they're vets and I don't always, I wouldn't know otherwise.
Nina, this is really great intel. Um, Mikhail, can you remind me what, what day you said you come over to Norwood? Typically was it the first or something Monday of the month?
Monday of the month. Absolutely. I can make sure that I can, uh, what time is that? It's a senior lunch. So I'm gonna assume it's noon.
It's at noon on Mondays and Wednes, uh, Thursdays every week. Now they absolutely have funding for every week, not just once a month. So.
Mikhail, it's at the, um, Norwood Town Hall, just right in the middle of town.
Town Hall. Okay. I'll absolutely go to the next one.
That's great. And maybe we could get a little stack of your business cards at the library and then as vets come in.
Staff meeting on Monday, so I'll mention it.
Carmen or someone who lives in Norwood from our staff, do we have any of Mikhail's cards at the office?
Don't. Thanks.
He might have some here at his office here.
Oh, oh, can your office here?
Here, I don't know. Do you, Mikhail?
Um, so I poach offices there. Other people's office, I try not to touch their stuff, but I absolutely a staff with the finance or with the road and bridge, since they have permanent, um, secretaries there. Absolutely.
Great. And then they could bring them over to the library. That would be really good.
Yeah. Cause Mikhail, we have a really nice conference room that we could reserve for you, you know, where you could meet with people privately if you need to. It's really state of the art, very nice conference room. So it might be better than poaching an office over at the Glockson.
Sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have what you need to make some of that happen, Mikhail?
You have it. Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you so much for being here. And Nina, thanks for all those connections. All right. Next up on our agenda was for, um, Galena to speak briefly about the land conservation easement program focused on farm preservation. That's something that's kind of being getting cooked up.
Yeah, it is in the, in the kind of simmer stage. I don't know.
Yeah.
But, um, Janet Cask, uh, our Parks and Open Space Director, um, is really interested in expanding conservation easements, um, in the county to include more ag property. And really putting these properties, um, in easements where they're going to be productive ag lands indefinitely. And that, that kind of language would be written into the easement link. Documents and there would be agreements with any future creators or owners that that land needs to stay at as a productive ag type of property. And, uh, it's really addressing, um, thinking about succession and how a lot of ranches and farms, you know, there's, there's not really a succession plan. There aren't necessarily kids or family members that want to take on, um, becoming a farmer or rancher, but they really want, the families want to see the lands stay as productive ag land. Um, and so the, uh, Colorado West Land Trust, um, as well as the Montezuma Land Trust are both working on these type of kind of, um, pilot conservation easement programs. Um, and there, we're hoping that there might be some properties here in San Miguel County that will be really primed for being some of the first of this type of conservation easement. So to be continued, um, but I'm very excited about it. And I, I think it's a, it could be a great opportunity to, you know, just make certain that our really healthy lands, especially where there's a lot of good soil equity and there's been just generations of work put into these lands that they remain as ag property. And, you know, don't just sit, um, or definitely not get developed. So I, it's very exciting. And, um, you know, they're looking, these different land trust companies are looking into ways to creatively fund these types of projects. Also, if it's, so that's not a, a burden on potential future, um, operators who want to come in and continue to, to operate these, these farms that are put into conservation.
That's great. Any questions from anybody? Thanks, Galena, and thanks Janet Cask for working on that.
Yeah.
Um, all right. Well, that was just what we kind of had for our agenda of updates coming from our end. And now we're just interested to hear from anybody, members of the public who had a comment or a question for the county. Do you?
Well, um,
It just goes along with. Reintroduce yourself just for.
Oh, Nina Cothie.
Yeah.
The jury from San Miguel County.
Yeah.
Um, Galena, so I'm going along with Janet Cask. Is there anything else that you know of? And maybe this would be better for a time when she's available, but, uh, that she's working on for Rights Mesa. And then in, one of my passions is this idea of a perimeter trail. I know that, that town has been working on it for years, but it always seems like nothing really moves on that. And it's just something I'm really big on, especially as I get older, I would like something that's a little easier to bike. And, uh, everyone I talk to is very interested in this. Whether it takes advantage of the existing right of ways that maybe there's a shoulder. I know we've had trouble in the past with CDOT when we tried to go out the other direction on the highway, uh, to link up like Pioneer Village. We had a big issue with CDOT. Working with them is impossible and very expensive, uh, what they were proposing. What I'm talking about is more taking advantage of county roads or possibly even just a trail. Uh, anyway, have you heard of anything like that? Or do you think you could talk to her and ask her?
Yeah. I mean, I will certainly revisit the concept of a, of a perimeter trail. I mean, I know there's some kind of like conceptual plans.
Yeah, there are.
I will say, I, Star Jameson, our natural resources director, she has put in for some grant funding to explore the viability of multimodal trails.
Yeah.
I really want to see multimodal trails going, I mean, pot, big plan is from the top of Norwood Hill to, to the town boundary and then from Pioneer Village to the town boundary as well. Um, I know that this has been discussed earlier and there is some real barriers through CDOT, but that, those barriers don't scare me. I think that there is certainly, it can be accomplished. Um, and so there, there is this grant, as I understand it, is really for like more of a a study of feasibility.
Yeah, that's your first step usually.
Yeah. Um, so steps are, that step is being taken. Um, I'll revisit with Janet.
Honestly, I, I remember Calvert Berge was very passionate about that trail out to the top of Norwood Hill. I will honestly tell you, it didn't make a lot of sense to me because what would happen from there? I mean, we all know Norwood Hill.
Yeah.
Preterous.
Well, the concept is really to connect residents to public transportation.
Okay.
Um, and then to create a safe route into town.
Okay.
Yeah. So just for, you know, residents living out in the periphery.
Yeah. And what's interesting about that is there are backroads, you know, we were well versed that provide that, you know, there's, I'm not well averse in the county road names, but there are intermediary roads that go east to west that would link town where you'd be off the highway. Just staying off the highway is so important because it really, I remember Kerry DiStefano and Linda Luther at the time, working for the county, tried to do that link out to Pioneer Village, which would be great. There's a lot of homes out there and, you know, and beyond even out towards some down the hill there. So that would be great. My interest, excuse me, I don't know why I'm hoarse. It's kind of twofold. The county parcel behind the library, my subdivision, um, on Pine Street, the county's parcel, uh, uh, further to the west, they all have an open space tract along the edge of it. There's actually a trail right by my house. I'm on the end of Pine Street. Um, that could be created right there with all of the existing right of ways. See, some of this just seems kind of easy. And I've even talked to some of the landowners, including the Thorny Cross and some others that would be very, very amenable to a right of way across a property to link up over to what we local vernacular, the Vet Road. So there could be a, a smaller loop, in other words, that children and seniors could use. So. But I, you know, something maybe I could talk to Janet about too.
Yeah.
Depends a little bit, Nina, whether it's within the town jurisdiction or whether it's outside of town of Norwood proper. Janet will be most comfortable in the county aspects and how do Norwood's going to be more.
The county, this is where I'm going to feel, you're going to hear me sound a little frustrated here. If I read the paper correctly, which often is not correct, but I often see a lot of participation with the county, with Mountain Village and Telluride on different projects. But I always feel this hands off thing with Norwood and we are really challenged here, really challenged. As you know, our government is still not completely staffed or up and operating proficiently.
I don't think I was saying that it would be entirely the town of Norwood, but certainly the town of Norwood would be involved.
Yes, and we would partner with them.
And I think.
But helping them by, by joining with them to move it along, because it's very hard to get them motivated because they're so overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we can.
You know, they're such a small staff. And, you know, I guess like, you know, it's so funny because when I worked with the county and I was close to this, as you know, I went right under the commissioners and with Lynn. I used to hear these complaints from the west end. Oh, you know, never do anything. Don't ignore wood. But you know what? Now that I'm living here, I have to say, I kind of feel that way. It's like, what is going on? What is the county doing for Rights Mesa? What is the county doing for Rights Mesa? And I used to defend it, but now that I'm here, and I get it, one of the things is you've got to pay attention. You've got to be getting online and looking at the agendas to see what actually is happening. And I will admit, I don't always do that. But on the other hand, maybe more outreach is necessary to make sure that residents out here are aware of what's going on. Um, I think one thing we always look at is the fairgrounds. Well, you know, we're doing the fair, we all do all this stuff at the fairgrounds. Not that many residents take advantage of opportunities at the fairgrounds and probably more Montrose County. You know, we've always had that challenge.
Well, Nina, I will say that we are absolutely open to any collaboration that would come up. Um, I don't know, I mean, I would maybe rely on citizens and events such as this for, for you all to make suggestions to us as you are right now with the perimeter field. That's a perfect example.
And maybe going to the town.
And, and obviously, Galena lives right here, and so she's very tuned in to what those needs are and what collaboration might be. And I know we all have warm relationships with the mayor of Norwood. So she knows that we are, you know, a phone call away. Um, there is a lot going on on the east end of the county because we've reached this point where infrastructure is just maxed out and housing is maxed out. So that, those needs are big and loud and so forth. But I hope you don't think that that means that we are favoring the east end over or Norwood or that we do come across as uncooperative, because that would by no means be our position.
I think it's just, I hear, and I may be misunderstood what you started to say, I think I did. I hear this, we don't want to interfere with the town of Norwood. And I think, especially since there has been some changing in staff there too with their town manager, with our, our town manager, um, they might be more amenable to the county.
I'll speak.
Approaching them to work on projects than they used to be a little like now.
We got this, yeah.
Thing.
Sure.
That might be changing, but I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak to the collaboration that I've been participating in with the town specifically. I, we didn't share our commissioner updates today in the name of time, but honestly, there are like 12 meetings that I've attended in the last 10 days that have been specifically with representatives from the town of Norwood and other west end leadership with, you know, in regard to water, the food pantry and the school bond and the Four Seasons Development workforce. And, you know, as representative of District Three, I'm doing everything I can to really try to work on issues specific to District Three and Rights Mesa.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
You know, what really was helpful sometimes was a column that you can get in the paper. Have you done that? Maybe you have, and I missed.
Yeah, I've written.
Yeah, I'm sorry, again.
I'm writing one for the San Miguel Basin Forum, alternating with District Montrose County Commissioner Sean Mont. Um, and then also at the Norwood Post.
The Norwood Post.
Yeah, um, but yeah, I would love to write more columns.
Yeah, because I, I think that's really useful, people see that, you know. Um, separate subject.
Just one second, Galena, was there anything that you think might be particularly useful to talk about in terms of your updates? I wasn't considering that you might have some specific to Norwood, you did just list off a number of them.
Yeah, I mean, they're all pretty like brief updates just on meetings I've had and things I'm working on. I mean, one specific, I met with the new Tylaride Rotary Director Kate Wadley, who happens to live here in Norwood, and we discussed potential programming projects that Rotary might be interested in funding in the upcoming fiscal year specific to District Three and specific actually to the Norwood community. Um, thinking about, you know, within the town boundaries here, maybe updating, well, we initially talked about trails, which is cool.
Yeah, there is a plan.
Yeah, I shared with her that's going on, and I know funding is one of the big hurdles for that. So potentially there could be a connection there with Rotary to support the funding for, for such a project. Yeah, and I mean, I'm, I've been trying to work with the town of Norwood and the Norwood Water Commission in every way I can to help support the funding component, like writing to our representatives. There, you know, there's congressional directed spending earmarked for the water redundant line. Um, we'll see if that comes to fruition, but.
Yeah.
You know, hopefully, and I, I attended the Growing Water Smart Workshop with Town of Norwood Representatives this spring to try to work on land use code and water conservation measures and come up with a bigger, more grand plan for long-term water conservation and just planning measures in general for, for Norwood's specific water. Um, yeah, it's, there's a long list, I mean.
And that water thing.
I am on the school bond thing now, because I suddenly really want to see that school bond get passed. That's just the special.
Yeah. And that change the dynamics.
Yeah, and I.
It sounds like it's a communication.
But I'm.
Part, you know.
Yeah, and I would just encourage.
Even at our Veterans Affairs, you know. Just great, linking things up, it's always been a passion. So I'm really glad I was here in time to hear about the Housing Needs Assessment, because that's my other issue, as you know, and you came to my presentation on the cottage housing.
Yes.
What I want to tell you, and I'll check out that assessment. I'd love to be a part of any group for the Rights Mesa involved with housing. I think I have enough expertise in that. And what, I get the water problem for housing here on the Mesa especially, as far as tasks. Um, but, I mean, just to show you an example, we have two people in our small staff, the library of only six, that are really challenged right now. One guy was going to have to move away, one of our best employees, Evan Allen, who's been here his entire life because he lost his home housing. And then we have another, thank you, we have another employee who actually lives in Redville right now, who is in the same boat, month to month, she never knows what her landlord is going to do. Now, I'm talking about rental housing, but I'm also kind of passionate about that, finding ways to, whether it's through land use code or master plans, you know, here for Norwood, to promote more rental housing as well as for sale housing, because it's necessary, not everybody wants to own a home and stay here forever. I myself own a house that's probably too big for me. I would love to sell my house to a family and move to a small cottage house. And when I had a, I had a second presentation, same as the one you came to Ann at the library, and I was astounded by the old time people, I won't mention any names, but that were here, that were there, that were like, hmm, you know, I'm kind of tired of my big five and 10 acres that I'm trying to take care of, you know? I've been thinking about something like this, about downsizing. And I, I was shocked, people we all know that have lived here forever. So I think it's just something I want you guys to keep on your radar, and I'll do the best I can to participate, because I have the resources and the knowledge now that I've really looked into this. It's a very viable situation for small homes, small, single-story homes. It could just be for seniors or it could be for both. I always think it's nice to have a neighborhood that's just for seniors because of the quiet. And then maybe adjacent, a neighborhood for families. And I also, I'll be honest, I think about your acreage out on the other side of the library.
Is that the acreage that's adjacent to Pinion Park?
Yeah, yeah.
Nina, it's interesting, in the Housing Needs Assessment presentation on Monday, there, I can't remember if they spoke about it, but in the report that I read, it did talk about retirees staying in their larger homes, larger than they need, because there's no downsizing opportunity.
Well, I brought.
Aging place, it's really, was it you that brought that thing, Nina?
Not to be, but.
No, please, please, speak to it.
Kind of, I felt like kind of overlooked in the report, that it was talking about the demographic of our, our aging population is growing in San Miguel County, but there really wasn't anything spelled out in the report necessarily, or maybe I missed it, but I did ask that question because I, I think it's.
You know, it's, it's good about discussing these things, you guys, because I'm even thinking about somebody I was talking to about that used to live in Ofer. And Ofer is a young people's community, let's face it, it's a rugged place to live. And you may even find by addressing this aging population idea that there are a lot of people residing in your districts that would be interested in moving to Norwood to a lower altitude where it's less onerous to, to live in the winter. So, I don't know, it's just something I'm very passionate about, as you know, and I have resources and knowledge to share. So I'll try to, can I ask, I might have missed something there towards the end of Mike's talk. What is this task force for, the one you're forming that people, was that housing or was that?
No, that, well, related to housing, but it's to take a fresh look at our land use code regulations and other policies and so forth, to see if we can do something to be more incentivizing, less, yeah, onerous for construction of.
So it is kind of related, there could be, okay.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like more regulatory, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to do with housing.
I'm done.
Hearing that you have interest when, when the Rights Mesa Master Plan comes down.
Yeah.
It's great.
Well, I know the town, I was on PNC for years and years, and I kept kind of, I was this squeaky wheel saying we needed to update our master plan for the town of Norwood. And I'll admit, I finally got kind of frustrated and I'm not on the board anymore, but more because I'm working and busy.
Were you on the Norwood PNC or the county?
The town of Norwood, the town of Norwood PNC for about seven.
I will tell you that the town of Norwood is going to be updating their master plan, and then the county is going to follow suit with updating the Rights Mesa Master Plan.
Okay.
And there will be an advisory group certainly for.
Yeah.
I would hope both those processes, I don't know how the town will be running it, but the county, just very similar to the east end master plan, there will be a citizen advisory group as well as stakeholders giving, kind of helping shape that plan.
I put the word in a long time ago, but they've had the change in staff, so I'll make sure they know I'm interested in.
Well, you're on my list, for sure. Pass that along.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Nina. Karen.
You guys just constantly educate us, you know, and I think that's, that's what is missing always, you know, for decades, you know? If you don't, I had the best advice when I became a parent from a Tylaride employer. And they're like, you know, if you don't show up in school unannounced and make it your business to know what's going on, then shame on you. You can't make any comments, what, why, why would you even consider making a draw before you say that if you show up, you know? And I think this is the perfect pitch, and I just love to, you know, neighbor down the hill.
But I, I really just feel like we, we all take for granted so many things here, you know, always, because we have so many people in all of our communities that we all count on, on many, many levels, you know? And I feel like this is just the perfect embodiment of what we need to aspire to ever, on a, on a monthly, quarterly basis, just to keep people connected on lots of levels, not just online. Online things can be so frustrating, not everybody does online. Our library is a huge sense of accomplishment for our community because it is a showcase of where you can go and interact and have places to, to do business. And the veterans gentlemen can come there and make comments and those kind of things. But I am basically, I'm just want to make a thought about water, because I just feel like, and this is not just county-wide, this is a Western comment about just the neglect that we are all involved in and not understanding how important it is to pay attention to preserving and utilizing the water that we have efficiently. How many guests that we have in Tylaride that we all need to come? But is there a notice anywhere of them to say, this is a highly, highly violent, intense drought situation in these highlands? I mean, I feel like all of our governments on every level, from the top Western governors down, are not putting it out there. When I'm on the gondola ride and I'm sitting next to someone from Arizona that says, you have plenty of water. And I'm like, well, okay, where did your water come from? But I think we're just in a, we're in a crisis point of this, and it's so frustrating. When we had our little 70-acre fire south of town last year in July, it was the grace of community and the man above and spirituality that saved us. I did not realize, Mike, that that particular weekend was a weekend that was a non-festival weekend, and it had not have been for that, we would have not had the goodness of our neighbors in Placerville and Tylaride to release staffing, I think, to come and help us because of some of the obligations for their crews with festivals and things like that. It was just one of those eye-opening experiences that you really, really have to dive into. And I don't have all the specifics, but I just feel like some sort of event of just posturing. It's just like the gondola finally deciding, this is transportation, we're doing our part as communities to try and eliminate some of the, the carbon story and some of the transportation, same thing with water. Why is that not an issue? Why is it not an issue? It's just that simple, it just is so heart-wrenching to me, to see the ground, to see all the things that are taking place because we know we're in a drought, and why are we not letting our guests come in and say, look, it would help our cause if you could just minimize how many loads of laundry you're going to do with your family of six while you're here for a week. That would be great for us, because all of us down Valley would appreciate maybe some of that extra water, I don't know. And I don't know if Ridgeway is experiencing some sort of water situation now. In the past few weeks that they're dealing with some sort of outdoor, maybe moratoriums or something like that. But I just feel like we are just scrambling and nobody has any connect the dots story to even begin with. So I just want people to start verbalizing and trying to put that on the Forest Service agenda when you were talking to her about the beetles and the story there, and the first thing that comes to your mind is drought. And we are on such a lower level of elevation, you know, at least some beautiful rain comes to the high country for you guys, and that's wonderful, you know, and then as we go down the hill, the rain just, you know, evaporates and we don't have as much. But I feel like negligence is the thing that is so frustrating to me on every, and it's not on any level, it's just all, all across the board. People don't understand the severity of where we're at. When it's gone, it's gone.
I think you make a really good point, Karen, because you go up, up valley and, or up, you know, into Tylaride, and it looks so green.
It's, that's fine.
Right, it's hard to recognize for someone who's not educated about the situation.
Just non-relative, but a friend just sent me a thing, Flagstaff, Arizona, I guess they're having now a prairie dog plague. And maybe that's a good sign that the, the creatures will know, because it's just so dry. As long as I've lived here, I've never seen the prairie dogs go as far south as they are to me. I mean, I have Badger Entertainment now watching, he has the prairie dogs. So a lot of them, yeah, yeah, it's just, it is just, we're, it's a perilous thing right now, it just really is. And thank you all for all of your efforts. There are so many people that have so much to offer, and if you just ask, you know? There are so many new people in our community, and we've been having some things at the livery, some, I don't know who, if the Tylaride Foundation is sponsoring any of them, but some night outs, you know, with some local people that are knowledgeable on just geography and all kinds, and it's wonderful, it's wonderful to see different people and your neighbors that you wouldn't see otherwise, you know? So that connectedness is really important for all of us, you know? But the water story, I just wanted to say thank you for letting us talk, and we need to get it on the table in lots of ways, so, thank you all.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, and I, that Growing Water Smart Workshop was great because there was a lot of takeaways about water conservation measures that can be taken at the municipal level. And I, I think that we're going to see some kind of land use code being implemented to support water conservation measures within the town of Norwood.
Yeah, it's important, even if people are understanding, yeah, where, how the water system works and how, you know, where does it stop? And then where does it go, and how much does this town get versus that town? You know, I mean, people just don't have a clue of, of how serious it is, they really truly don't. I, I'm speaking for myself, I have no clue, you know, so.
Oh, we have a sense, don't we?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I've always thought it'd be neat at the libraries, both the Tylaride Library and here, to have some sort of a diagram of the water systems and the watershed and, you know, so visitors and locals alike can just look, be like, oh, that's. And post that there where the water ultimately goes and, you know, kind of understand the watershed at a deeper level.
That's really, it is, just a little thing so people can get their minds in, in a set that they need to understand, it's everybody's responsibility, you know, so.
That sounds like something you could get a grant for.
Local affairs. I've been talking about to San Miguel Waterside Coalition about it, actually.
Yeah, that would be really cool. I see we have a member on the, of the public online. If that person would like to speak, please raise your hand. Um, we also have a recent arrival, a arriver of our, um, former county commissioner from District Three. Our Good Times, did you come to share some words of wisdom with us?
Sure did, and thank you so much, and I apologize for being late. I was visiting with Elizabeth Giff who's in Cosmo, so I couldn't get away quickly. But, um, I was, uh, before I became commissioner, I was really involved with weeds, uh, said plural, not singular. Uh, although I was involved with that too, but the the weeds problem on Rights Mesa has gotten really out of hand and I'm kind of disappointed. We started out, I I saw on the forum in in the early summer, maybe it was the late spring, an article about, uh, uh, white top. And then I went up my county road and as I told, you know, there's all this white top uh, on the side of the road and it's flowering, I mean, you can't mow it. It's too late to do non-lethal treatment. You gotta go up and use poisons, which, yeah, you can do, but that's something if we're on top of, we don't need to do. They will tell you that you can't mow white top, but I disagree. I've hand-pulled it for several years in my property and as long as you keep it up, it eventually dies out and you can replace it. It's especially noticeable when I see white top on the barrow ditch on the county road spreading into, uh, neighboring ranchers' plant. And it goes both ways, but along my road, that's what I saw. Our road bridge does a great job. I think they're terrific. The problem I think we have is we have a weed situation where we have an out of county weed superintendent, as I understand it. And I, and I know it's a good cost savings. We did it with nurses for a while and that worked for a while. But I'm wondering if it's still working. I mean, I'm, I'm getting to the point where it's not Rights Mesa, it's White Cloud Mesa. And and that's just one weed. Uh, there are many weeds. I I was out hand clipping the heads off of thistle because I was sick and my property got, it overran my property again. If you get it before it heads, it actually pulls up nutrients from deep in the earth and it's actually can be a very good thing. But you need to make sure it doesn't have seeds that waft off all over the basin. So I don't know exactly your situation, but you know, then we had the embarrassing, uh, milk thistle article in the second basin forum. And that's why I thought at this point I talked to Galena, but I thought I ought to bring it up with all three of you that, um, I've talked to some of the weed board members, like I say, I was on the weed board with Doris for, uh, back before I became commissioner and, uh, I was even Commissioner of the Year by the state weed organization at one time, which I proudly showed all my stoner friends. They love it. But the reality is, as a native plant, uh, protector, I'm really concerned about our native plants and that we aren't careful in doing the integrated weed management process where we mow when we can, we use spray only when we have to. To do that, we have to be a little bit more on top of what we're doing here. So I know money is always short, there's always problems, but I just wanted to raise that issue with you. Uh, I don't know how it is up in Telluride, I'm not up there much, but I am down here a lot. And, uh, and I'm battling weeds on my property for a lot, for thirty-five years now. I've I've watched it happen. I've watched it change and I watched the cycles, so. I just want to raise that awareness to you. It's a little flag that you guys should just think about and I'm not saying. And 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 let me say this, it's wonderful. You have this kind of an opportunity, um, to to speak. And I also want you to know, it's not just complaints you should hear. I think you're doing a terrific job, all three of you. I I honestly, I think our, 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 our departments are terrific. I'm looking forward to getting hanging out with, I know our road bridge guys break because he's Italian. That makes a big difference. But honestly, I think, uh, the county's doing really well. So, uh, you know, minor complaints aside, I think it's just good to be aware that we have a little bit of a water problem that I think Karen brings up that's really important. I I don't know why our newspapers, you know, when we had a problem with Idorado, the newspaper at the time did a fifteen part series on the Idorado study. We need a fifteen part series on water. We need an investigative journalist talking to people. I mean, it's not the county responsibility. It's the the newspapers who are supposed to educate and inform, not just, you know, sell full page real estate ads. So maybe that in the absence of that opportunity, maybe it's something we combine with our libraries and see if we can you know, figure out a way for the foundation or something to get a grant, to do a diorama, make a, get it to the visitor center, maybe get the visitor center to put up a corner of their spot. I mean, I think there's a number of things we might possibly be able to do, but I think Karen is really right. People, even I, don't understand exactly who gets what water in the county. Um, and how much it is, and I think that would be a really great thing for all of us to know.
And those weeds, the thistles, it's, you know, when you go south on Luluncon Road in this night, and they have one beautiful section that's just, there's a big stretch, it must be about five acres of solid thistles. It is very rare to have ever seen there. And they're just plagued with the prairie dogs too as well. It's just amazing what's going on. The whole, the whole drain is is definitely being affected by water.
Karen, is the thistle that you're talking about on county roads or?
No, it's, yeah, no, it's got property.
We have had other, um, concerned citizens speak to us about the weeds on Rights Mesa and, um, my understanding, and I know this is true, is that this year, for the first time, we are fully staffed in the weed department and, um, or, yeah, I guess that's what they're called.
Vegetative management.
Thank you. Weed department. And we have, um, well, you're you're correct that we do share, um, the department with your Ray County, but I know we have more than one full-time person a week over here, uh, uh, yeah, full, a full-time person over here during the summer. So it should be getting done. Um, we also, if there are specific areas, which again, we should be aware of, but if we aren't, there's a place, actually, you just go to the weed management webpage and email them. I did it myself this weekend because we have white top up where I live. And she responded very quickly, we'll see, to my message. We'll see how quickly the weeds get addressed. But it it really does help when we have specific input, um, from citizens.
That's interesting because I wasn't aware that was programmed even that the county had, that you could report weeds, like you report dogs or sheep.
Yep, I'll send you the, um, the, I'll send you.
It's not so much me, I'm just thinking, you know, public in general. I I don't, I think that's something. If you're going to advertise whether they're talking about milkweed, tell us about a program where we can call in and identify stuff. That's a better thing than telling us about the weeds, which most of us don't work about the weeds and the people.
You mean like, yeah, which are the non-people?
Add the neighbors.
Megan, this is a good call. I think, um, and I've found myself sending out information individually to people about road and bridge, um, requests as well. That's the kind of thing we could put, we have a new communications coordinator.
Congratulations.
And a paper about these sort of hotlines or reporting lines to, um, help people understand that they're available. That would be great.
And that's the kind of continuing will feed evergreen information that we should just keep broadcasting every twenty minutes.
Yeah, keep it in the rotation. I don't know, maybe, um, let's think about whether there are any other of those kind of points of contact that we could consolidate into that announcement. I can't think of them right now, but. Yeah.
You know, with water, maybe the lodging companies should have something that could create a really good flyer about conserving water in the condos and hotels. They maybe they do that.
San Miguel Tower.
Yeah.
Send out a little flyer with their bill.
Yeah. Yeah, you can double up and save money on mailing if you're doing it through snail mail, but, um, or their newsletter. But yeah, just occurred to me about the lodging companies because that's huge, the guests.
Yep. Yep.
Art, I just sent you that link. I just learned about that. Oh, sure. I didn't know that you could actually.
Yeah, it's just a link.
To report a weed.
Alrighty.
Commissioner Brown, I think you were speaking about, uh, Antonio Dariani.
Another fine Italian man.
And I, yeah, I see if unmute, do you have anything to add to our kind of free ranging conversation here? I'm clicking on the ask to unmute button, but I don't think I've got the controls.
Uh, there he is.
Tony, hi.
Tony, say hello. Oops, he went quiet again. He muted again.
Doesn't want to talk.
No, that's all right.
All right.
You know how to find us, Tony. Um, all right, anything else from anybody to add or no? Thank you all for coming. It's feels really good to hear from you directly and I like the idea of having a little bit of dialogue too, which isn't always the case in our public meetings, so really appreciate all that.
Yeah, and I feel this has been worthwhile. I'm going to push for this to be a more, you know.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, it was confused, I noticed, but I have a lot more.
Yeah. But it's good. It's a way, and I think more and more people will attend when they know about it and it becomes more of a regular.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
And I'll do my homework too. We know you do your homework. All right, um, I think we are now ready to adjourn. The time is six twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, Matt. How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. I as well. Our special meeting in the town of Norwood is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Here. See.
Ready, German.
Yes, that with those wheels on the chair. Yes, he did. Vince did too. Wheels are not always.